I'd like to welcome everyone as we call it tonight's meeting for the LaFouche Parish School Board is made to order. We'll start with an invocation by Mr. Sheriff Thomas, District Two, and continue with the pledge of allegiance from Mr. Al Archer, District Three.
By God, Heavenly Father, we come to you grateful for every sunset and thankful for every sunrise because each day on this earth is a blessing. Watch over and shower us with your love and keep us and our loved ones safe during these difficult times and remind us to always put you at the center of everything we do. Help us to stay close to you always, not living in the past but pressing forward to the new things you have in store for us. We ask all of this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I beg to thank you for your service to the board for six months and five years. Thank you very much. Do you have a question about that?
I do both. Two.
This is an appreciation for your service as president.
I'm taking this off. Thank you all so much. It's been a pleasure and honor to serve.
Thank you, my myself.
Please.
You get to turn with the kids? Yes. We can only say thank you.
It's been an honor and a privilege for the past six years. It's been a ride. I'm so pleased to have Mr. Bootery to take over for District Five. It's been wonderful working with everyone. It's been wonderful to represent the teachers, the students, the parents, and all the staff of LaFouche Parish over the past six years. It's been a great ride. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Archer?
Yes. Remember Dr. Bro when she was working at PAC, once a friend of hers and we will miss, and I'm sure she will keep in touch with us, so please do so. Reach out and touch. And then, thank you very much for your time and service.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
I would just like to thank Mary for this opportunity. In maybe in a couple of months, I won't be thanking you.
Anyone else? Yes, Dr. Yeh?
Yes, sir. Of course, we're colleagues at work, but without you, I would have never considered running for this office. And so your encouragement, which I'm sure you've encouraged many others to seek because you feel like you see service in us and you see that opportunity, so I appreciate you seeing that in me. All right, yes, thank you.
Mr. Van Ooyen?
Mrs. Bro and I, or Dr. Bro and I, go back a long, long ways. I know her mother and her stepfather very personally, and working with Mary in pupil appraisal when we were in the central office, she is going to be missed and she's very innovative. She's a leader for sure. And I wish you had been able to stay as our president, but I know I know you will fill your shoes, but you will be missed for sure.
Anyone else? I would like to say to you, Dr. Bro, I sincerely thank you for being such a wonderful role model and mentor. You're inspiring and you have truly become a dear friend. I really truly appreciate you. Thank you for everything. Anyone else? Item F, to introduce the newly appointed board members representing District Two and District Five. District Two, we have Ms. Robin A. Bell. And District Five, we have Mr. Richard J. Bootery Jr. Item G, to recognize Ms. Abby Sheremee, Child Nutrition Technician, for outstanding service. Come on in.
Thank you, Madam President. With us tonight, we have Ms. Abby Sheremee, who is one of our very talented employees, and I've got Ms. Lauren Fletcher, Director of Child Nutrition, here to say a few words about her heroic acts and just tremendous on-the-spot actions. I'll turn it over to Ms. Fletcher.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Abby Sheremee is one of our food service technicians. She has been employed with us for about four years. She started out part-time two, four years ago, and after two years of service with us, she became full-time. Abby has always been assigned to Golden Meadow Upper Elementary School. As you all know, during this COVID year, it's been a real challenge, and one of our employees was out on extended medical leave at Golden Meadow Lower, so Abby, very graciously, didn't even give us any forms. We had to transfer her there temporarily to help us out at that school, which she's helped us out at some other schools in the past. So she's an extraordinary employee. She's kind, she's hardworking, she's dedicated, and she's very loyal. But on this particular day in April, she showed us how much courage she had, and I think I can say that she is a woman of faith, as I am as well, and she truly felt like what happened that day was a real calling, that she was there for a reason, and I think we all believe that. But she was just doing her chores that day, cleaning up the tables, and a child started to cough, not cough, choke.
Yeah. I can imagine he was choking first, but he was drinking his milk. So I thought maybe he just choked on the milk. So I kept cleaning the tables, and he kept coughing and coughing, so I just kind of kept looking at him. And then the last time I looked at him, I could see that he was not coughing anymore, and he was gagging, and nothing was coming out. And the last thing I remember is the mop hitting the floor, the sound of the mop hitting the floor, and then I was there. And I did two thrusts, and the teacher got to him about maybe two, three seconds after me, and she said, I think he got it out. And he started coughing. And I was, thank God, thank my God. He started crying, I started crying, and he was like, he was scared, he was really scared. But the teacher told me after the children left the cafeteria that he had started to turn blue. So he was really choking.
I think everybody would put in that, you would hope that you would do the right thing. The fact that she actually knew the high maneuver and even there was a testament to our safety program, that she had witnessed the video and knew what to do. But I think the real testament to me that I'm impressed with and am never going to forget in my very long career, this is the first time I had an employee, that you just really had the courage to do the right thing in the right place. And I think that's a testament to you and your character. We just wanted to acknowledge you and thank you for what you've done. Because we say our welfare of the students is truly the most important, and it is, and without a doubt, you did what needed to be done that day, and you truly saved that little boy's life.
Well, I have children in the school.
And her husband?
And her children are here tonight. I would hope that someone would do the same for my children. It'd be the case. It's not a think about it. It's a act of warning. And I know there's other protocols probably that should have been done, like calling a code whatever, but that wouldn't have been the point. It would have been what you need to do. If it wouldn't have worked out, then...
I appreciate the school board for acknowledging her. I'm sorry, we have to...
Picture time, pen time.
We do.
Certificate time.
You can take off if you don't want to. You don't have to.
We love the smile, love you.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a comment.
We always talk about how we say thank you to everybody in the system to make a difference in the lives of our children, and this is a testament to that everyone in our system just loves our children and they do what they need to do for them. So much appreciated that she did this work.
Anyone else?
I think the key word is react. A lot of people are not proactive, and it's so important for her to understand that her responsibilities were at that time. Some people would have strayed away and panicked. In her case, she reacted, and that's such a positive, such a positive.
Absolutely.
And you've been always present too. It's always been a part of the God with her. Thank you.
Next, item H, the LaFouche Awards Recognition Slideshow.
Quintina Brown, LaFouche Parish Public Schools McKinney Vento Coordinator. Ms. Brown was honored for her leadership role at the National Association of Federal Educational Program Administrator Conference. She was nominated for her commitment to serving the children in the McKinney Vento Program and the Neglected and Delinquent Program of LaFouche Parish. Cole Weber, Thibodaux High School. Cole was selected as a winner of the National Merit Scholarship. Seventeen thousand students across the United States academically qualified for this honor, and only 2,500 were chosen. Alec Oglesby, South LaFouche High School. Alec passed the National Surf Safe Managers Exam. He earned his certificate at the national level and plans to attend NSU in culinary. Hayden Gaujor, South LaFouche High School. Hayden was selected as the U. O'Brien Youth Leadership Ambassador for 2020-2021 School Year. Nicholas Anderson, Central LaFouche High School. Nicholas was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Orchestra, and Trombone. David Kane, Central LaFouche High School. David was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensemble, All-State Orchestra, Tuba. Nathan Anderson, Central LaFouche High School. Nathan was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Symphonic Band, Flute. Grace Landry, Thibodaux High School. Grace was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Symphonic Band, Flute. Diane Penna, Central LaFouche High School. Diane was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Symphonic Band, Clarinet. Caroline Loop, Thibodaux High School. Caroline was selected to the All-State Ensembles, All-State Symphonic Band, Bass, Clarinet. Jonathan Doucet, Central LaFouche High School. Jonathan was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Symphonic Band, Tuba. Hunter Brown, Central LaFouche High School. Hunter was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Symphonic Band, Percussion. Peyton Jackson, Central LaFouche High School. Peyton was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Concert Band, French Horn. Savannah Tastey, Central LaFouche High School. Savannah was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Concert Band, French Horn. Jacob Rodrigue, Central LaFouche High School. Jacob was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Concert Band, Trombone. Carson Chasson, South LaFouche High School. Carson was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Concert Band, Euphonium. Corinne Nevis, Central LaFouche High School. Corinne was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Concert Band, Euphonium. Sammy Petrie, South LaFouche High School. Sammy was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Concert Band, Percussion. Dawson Green, Thibodaux High School. Dawson was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Concert Band, Percussion. Natalie Harmon, Central LaFouche High School. Natalie was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Concert Band, Clarinet. Micah Bascal, South LaFouche High School. Micah was selected by the LMEA All-State Mixed Choir. Bailey Sheremee, South LaFouche High School. Bailey was selected by the LMEA All-State Mixed Choir. Arrow Schwess III, South LaFouche High School. Arrow was selected by the LMEA All-State Mixed Choir. Lily Hodges, Central LaFouche High School. Lily was selected by the LMEA All-State Mixed Choir. Haley Pochet, Thibodaux High School. Haley was selected by the LMEA All-State Mixed Choir. Kristen Richard, Central LaFouche High School. Kristen was selected to the LMEA All-State Ensembles, All-State Symphony Band, Flute. Braxton Petrie, South LaFouche High School. Braxton was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Football. Luke Mintz, Central LaFouche High School. Luke was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Football. Trey Danoff, South LaFouche High School. Trey was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Football and Soccer. Thu Nguyen, South LaFouche High School. Thu was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Soccer. Cade Babbin, Thibodaux High School. Cade was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Boys Soccer. He was presented for exemplary academic achievement by maintaining the highest GPA among all athletes during their academic career while participating in varsity athletics. Morgan Guidry, Central LaFouche High School. Morgan was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Girls Soccer. Gracie Babbin, Central LaFouche High School. Gracie was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Girls Soccer. Gee Theresa Vu, Thibodaux High School. Gee was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Girls Soccer and Girls Tennis. She was presented for exemplary academic achievement by maintaining the highest GPA among all athletes during their academic career while participating in varsity athletics. Emma Troescler, Thibodaux High School. Emma was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Girls Tennis. She was presented for exemplary academic achievement by maintaining the highest GPA among all athletes during their academic career while participating in varsity athletics. Seth Dewey, Thibodaux High School. Seth was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Boys Tennis. He was presented for exemplary academic achievement by maintaining the highest GPA among all athletes during their academic career while participating in varsity athletics. Brandon Daniels, South LaFouche High School. Brandon was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Basketball. Evan Dewey, South LaFouche High School. Evan was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Track and Field. Brianna Bilbo, Central LaFouche High School. Brianna was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Girls Track. Jaleah Blackman, Thibodaux High School. Jaleah was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Girls Track and Field. She was presented for exemplary academic achievement by maintaining the highest GPA among all athletes during their academic career while participating in varsity athletics. Jenna Emord, South LaFouche High School. Jenna was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Softball. Josephine Weemer, Thibodaux High School. Josephine was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Softball. She was presented for exemplary academic achievement by maintaining the highest GPA among all athletes during their academic career while participating in varsity athletics. Brandon Daniels, South LaFouche High School. Brandon was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Basketball. Evan Dewey, South LaFouche High School. Evan was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Track and Field. Brianna Bilbo, Central LaFouche High School. Brianna was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Girls Track. Jaleah Blackman, Thibodaux High School. Jaleah was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Girls Track and Field. She was presented for exemplary academic achievement by maintaining the highest GPA among all athletes during their academic career while participating in varsity athletics. Jenna Emord, South LaFouche High School. Jenna was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Softball. Josephine Weemer, Thibodaux High School. Josephine was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Softball. She was presented for exemplary academic achievement by maintaining the highest GPA among all athletes during their academic career while participating in varsity athletics. Brandon Daniels, South LaFouche High School. Brandon was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Basketball. Evan Dewey, South LaFouche High School. Evan was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Track and Field. Brianna Bilbo, Central LaFouche High School. Brianna was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Girls Track. Jaleah Blackman, Thibodaux High School. Jaleah was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Girls Track and Field. She was presented for exemplary academic achievement by maintaining the highest GPA among all athletes during their academic career while participating in varsity athletics. Jenna Emord, South LaFouche High School. Jenna was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Softball. Josephine Weemer, Thibodaux High School. Josephine was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Softball. She was presented for exemplary academic achievement by maintaining the highest GPA among all athletes during their academic career while participating in varsity athletics. Kinsley Ross, Central LaFouche High School. Kinsley was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Softball and Volleyball. Bailey Terabon, South LaFouche High School. Bailey was selected to the LHSAA Academic All-State Team Swimming. Ava Petrie, South LaFouche High School. Ava was selected to the Bayou Region Girls Basketball Team. Madison Ryan, South LaFouche High School. Madison was selected to the Bayou Region's Girls Basketball Team. Diane Penna, Central LaFouche High School. Diane received first place in the Sculpture Division II, third place in Spanish 12th Grade Academic Tests at the Louisiana State Virtual Beta Convention. Meg Chauvin, Central LaFouche High School. Meg received second place in Jewelry Division II at the Louisiana Virtual Beta Convention. Amy Chasson, Central LaFouche High School. Amy received third place in Color Photography Division II at Louisiana State Virtual Beta Convention. Cade Bergeron, Central LaFouche High School. Cade received third place in Woodworking II at Louisiana State Virtual Beta Convention. Olivia Benoit, Racine Upper Elementary. Olivia placed second at the state level in the 4H Seafood Demonstration for Division One. Connor Hitt, Racine Upper Elementary. Connor earned first place in the Regional Level 4H Shooting Sports, 9-11-year-old, Junior 3D Compound Limited Division. Connor also placed second at the state level in 4H Louisiana Crots Demonstration for Division One. Andrew Goode, Galliano Elementary. Andrew placed first in the State Social Studies Fair Anthropology Individual. Ryland Guidry, North LaRose Elementary. Ryland placed second in the State Social Studies Fair Division Anthrop... Ethan Keith, North LaRose Elementary. Ethan placed second in the State Social Studies Fair Division One Anthropology Group. Carson Terrio, LaRose Cut Off Middle. Carson placed first in the State Social Studies Fair Division One History Group. Tucker Lee, Cut Off Elementary. Tucker placed first in the State Social Studies Fair Division One History Group. Isabel Dawson, North LaRose Elementary. Isabel placed first in State Social Studies Fair Division One Sociology Individual. Kayo Guidry, LaRose Cut Off Middle. Kayo placed second in the State Social Studies Fair Division Two Economics Group. Noah Kidd, LaRose Cut Off Middle. Noah placed second in the State Social Studies Fair Division Two Economics Group. Kenzie Como, LaRose Cut Off Middle. Kenzie placed third in the State Social Studies Fair Division Two History Individual. Michaela Bienvenu, LaRose Cut Off Middle. Michaela placed second in the State Social Studies Fair Division Two History Group. Noah Smith, LaRose Cut Off Middle. Noah placed second in the State Social Studies Fair Division Two History Group.
Again, we want to congratulate all of our award recipients tonight. I think I speak on behalf of everyone, and we hope that we can do this in person very soon, and we're looking forward to that day. And we'd like to tell all the families of these recipients that the awards associated with these accomplishments are being sent to the school, and they should have them next week, so please visit your child's school next week to actually get the actual physical representation of our acknowledgement of these great accomplishments. Madam President?
Thank you. Item two, approval of board consent agenda. A, approval of board consent agenda items. B, minutes of regular board meeting held April 14, 2021. C, minutes of policy and procedure committee meeting held April 20, 2021. D, minutes of transportation committee meeting held April 20, 2021. E, minutes of planning and facilities management committee meeting held April 20, 2021. F, minutes of insurance committee meeting held April 21, 2021. G, minutes of finance committee meeting held April 21, 2021. H, minutes of academics committee meeting held April 21, 2021. And I, minutes of special board meeting held April 28, 2021. Can I get a motion? Motion by Ms. Mary Cortita, seconded by Mr. Al Archer. We can vote. Item three, approval of policy and procedure committee recommendations as per meeting held April 20, 2021. Dr. Dennis Guidy.
To approve revisions to Policy BB8, Officers GBQ Retirement and revisions to the Board Member Handbook ISO move.
Seconded by Ms. Van Bootwa. Any public comment? Any board comment? If not, we'll vote. Item four, approval of transportation committee recommendations as per meeting held April 20, 2021. Mr. Todd Dufresne.
A, to authorize adding a transportation dispatcher to the Transportation Department. So move?
Move by Mr. Dufresne. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Tim Long. Any public comment? Any board comment? If not, we'll vote.
Board comment? Discussion? Can we call a discussion now?
Comment discussion, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so my understanding, the dispatcher, will this dispatcher come in with a CDL license?
Mr. Dufresne, would you like that?
Yes, ma'am. The current job description that we're going to go on under the Finance Committee states that they have to have one or obtain one within six months.
So they're not coming in for long?
They don't necessarily have to, as long as they obtain one within six months.
So we had a problem, what if something happens and, I mean, I just think they should come in with a CDL license, because after all, you're going to be on the transportation, you're looking, you know, it may come to a point where you may have to get out and help with the buses or drive a bus or have some knowledge of driving a bus. So why we can't have one come in with a CDL license already instead of waiting six months to get one? I'm just asking, throwing... I'm just asking, throwing this question out there.
Dr. Ghiad?
So, I mean, I, I think similar to the situation we had with a financial position. You kind of pigeonhole yourself and limit yourself and, uh, you know, obviously you want to get a candidate that maybe has had some experience, though they may not, if they have experience dispatching, but maybe not in the school system, or maybe not where they had to be, have the CDL. They may be the best candidate to hire, but yet you've given them that opportunity to get it in six months. And that is part of the their description, you would get it within that six-month period, obviously, when we offer a course or a class in that.
But with that being said, I understand what you're saying about the finance. This is totally different. We got a lot of people with CDL license. And a lot of qualified people with, but we already sure the bus drivers. You know, and something may happen where Mitch can't get out, and this person may have to get out there. And maybe this person may have to drive that bus. If something, you know, could happen, God forbid anything like that happened. But I just think we need to be more prepared.
Mr. Benor?
Uh, I'd like to get an opinion on Mitch on this. Any opinion that you may have concerning this?
Thank you, Mr. Benor. Like Dr. Ghiad said, my goal was to cast the widest net that I could to get the most qualified candidates I could onboard. It is in my job description when I came onboard to obtain my CDL within six months. I did not have it previously. And like Ms. Thomas said, once you do obtain your CDL, it does give you a lot more knowledge of what you're going to be dealing with, such as bus drivers, school buses, and things of that. But I think if this individual were to come onboard, get it within six months, that would be.
So you're comfortable with?
Yes, sir.
Ben is correct.
Mr. Wong?
Yeah, I would like to just comment on the wider net. You know, as someone who has hired teachers and professors and various, uh, employees through the years, and you want that wide net cast. And if you say you have to have a CDL, that tends to limit the pool. It does. One of the things that I thought of just as we were talking is, you know, very few college graduates have CDL license. But yet they may be working for, say, a product company, UPS, or FedEx, or someone in a dispatching capacity. Or they may have previously held one and just moved into a supervisory position where they didn't need the CDL on a day-to-day basis. To me, the, holding a CDL really and truly is, is not a deal breaker in my opinion. If the person has the proper experience, the proper things that we're looking for. I would hate to exclude someone as an extremely knowledgeable or extremely experienced applicant just on the fact that, oh, no CDL. You know, if they can't get it within six months, well, they won't have the job longer than six months. It's just that something. But I just, I don't like the idea of limiting somebody with that. You know, I hate to say it this way, but a CDL really isn't that big of a deal to get. And if you're in that business and do your studying and do what you need to do, so. That's just my opinion on the matter, but thank you for your.
Madam President, I run to a point of order. The motion that's on the table is just about adding the dispatcher position. It's not about the job description. So, Mr. Benor?
We just move on on this, or we go ahead and vote? And we can revisit the audio when we get to the actual job description?
Yeah, we do.
Alright, so let's go ahead and vote. The, what we are voting on is to actually add the Transportation Dispatcher to the Transportation Department. Motion carries.
Item B, to authorize VNL Transportation to purchase ten new buses to begin leasing for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. So move.
Motion by Mr. Tyler Dufran, seconded by Mr. Ravenor. Any public comment? Any board comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries. Item five, approval of Land and Facilities Management Committee Recommendations as per meeting held April twentieth, twenty twenty one. Mr. Tim Wong.
Yes, item A is to accept the change order to add three additional days to the contract due to inclement weather during the month of March twenty twenty one for the new cafeteria project at South LaRose Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Mr. Tim Wong, seconded by Mr. Todd Duplanis. Any public comment? Any board comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries.
Okay, item B is to authorize to renew a two-year lease with the option to rent on a month-by-month basis for one additional year by your community academy, BCA, for a portion of the building located at eight hundred East Seventh Street, formerly East Thibodeaux Middle School, multiple classrooms, nine, located at Thibodeaux Elementary School, South Side Building, third floor, one classroom located on the second floor at Thibodeaux Elementary School, South Side Building, and one classroom located on the second floor of the Business Complex Building, and take appropriate action. So move.
Motion by Mr. Tim Wong, seconded by Dr. Dennis Ghiad. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries.
Okay, item C is to authorize a twenty percent reduction of the appraised price, original appraisal, appraisal of four hundred and five thousand dollars for the property located at two one three four Bayou Road, Thibodeaux, Louisiana, formerly the Tops North Site, for a new revised appraisal price of three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars as per revised statute forty-one dash eight ninety-one. So move.
Motion by Mr. Tim Wong, seconded by Mr. Mary Plazons. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries.
Item D, to authorize a request to extend the contract with Mr. Tony LaFaso of Donny's Real Estate for an additional six months for the advertisement for the sale of the old Tops North Site for the revised appraisal value. Day. So move.
Motion by Mr. Tim Wong, seconded by Ms. Valerie Boujwa. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries.
Uh, item E, to authorize declaring five portable buildings located at the old Racine Elementary School site as surplus and to authorize advertising said buildings for sale. So move.
Motion by Mr. Tim Wong, seconded by Mr. Ray Schwest. Any public comment? Any board comment, discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries. Item six, approval of Finance Committee Recommendations as per meeting held Wednesday, April twenty first, twenty twenty one. Mr. Joey Duplanis?
To approve position changes and additions in job descriptions for all new positions.
Motion by Mr. Joey Duplanis, seconded by Mr. Rick Bootery. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Mr. Dufran?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I just want to go back to what Ms. Thomas was speaking on earlier. Giving this some thought over the past few days, I personally, my opinion, I would like to see someone coming with a CDL. So in the meantime, if someone is coming, it would be groundbreaking. I know Transportation has a lot of objectives to cover this summer in getting routes completed and so on. We need someone that can multitask. And I think someone that has driving experience can give a lot of insight to them. Having spoken with numerous of our bus drivers over the past few days, all of them have heard me and brought to my attention that they would feel much more comfortable with someone coming in who has a CDL because they feel that this person would have been through the trenches, so to speak, just as they have been. And that someone may feel they can respect much more easily and work with much more easily coming in with that knowledge rather than trying to gain that knowledge over a period of six months, which those of you who have it. So based on what I've heard from the feedback of our bus drivers, I would like to make an amended motion to take out the payment board within six months from the job description.
Okay, in order to amend, so your motion to amend the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Thomas. So we need to have a hand vote to amend the actual motion. Ms. Retita?
I have a question. Uh, how long does it take, normally take to get a CDL?
I can answer that.
Six weeks. Six weeks. So we have that cut for, uh, for now. So, I mean, we're not, we're not asking somebody to wait six months. You know, we can basically hire somebody and within six weeks they can have, they can have the CDL. So maybe we've, instead of changing the description, changing the amount of time that we give them to get their CDL. To maybe two months, three months, something like that, you know, rather than taking it out completely. Because I, I can remember quite well, those of you who remember, when we tried to replace Don Goday, we put stipulations for CPA and we put an ID to anyone. So we had to end up dropping that and changing it. So I would rather just see us amending the amount of time. And, um, you know, again, I understand it would be a time, there'd be a lot of other stuff they have to do before then, but, you know, that, that just might be. Um, Ms. Thomas?
Mitch, how long did it take you to get your license?
It took me approximately five months. Based on my responsibilities that I had, uh, to, to get my CDL, in the meantime, it took roughly five months based off of the timing of the hire, so I could take the next course through the availability of Mr. Chris Porche, when he was able to test me and things of that nature.
I would also like to, I would also like to raise the question of us saying, even making, having a middle round and saying something like, CDL preferred, and then maybe lower that, um, time frame. That's another thing I'd like us to consider as we consider amending the motion. Yes, Mr. Wong?
One thing I'd like to kind of figure out on what Mitch said. You know, part of the time is when classes start and availability of the classes that you're able to take. And then you have to, of course, take the course, and you have to study, and take your tests, and get road tested and all that. So that takes time. To me, six months is a reasonable time period. It's not unreasonable length-wise. You know, now, give them a year, yeah, that's too much. But to me, six months is, is very reasonable, uh, for getting a CDL license.
Mr. Plazons?
Yeah, I, I have to agree with Madam President. I do like preferred CDL. Not necessarily to have it. Uh, I think it would be a good thing to have it in there. It doesn't actually pigeonhole us as bad with, with or without it. Uh, I do feel if, you know, obviously having a CDL already would be great. But not something that should be mandatory, but should be, uh, in, obviously, in six months' deal to, to be capable of getting it. The only problem is, is this person is going to be working a lot. So if you or she in six months doesn't have it, we start all over again. Because this dispatcher is going to get involved in droughts, with which bus drivers, like in the trenches with bus drivers. I, I'm not sure. I mean, it took you five months. It might take you four, five months as well. So I don't know. I, I think being preferred would definitely be a, a, a good, a good way to go about it.
Have a good Tuesday. No side talking when someone has to go with this. So just that.
Mr. Plazons?
I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Thomas?
I, I need to make a correction. For school buses, two weeks. It takes two weeks to get your CDL license for school buses. Um, at Fletcher. Uh, and it's six weeks for Class A. The school bus is Class B, and it's two weeks. Um, and it could continue if they need to give it to them. The, um, some of the regulations are going to change next year. So you, you really need to be careful with that. Um, and I do like it preferred. I do like it. But I don't like the six months, if it takes you two weeks to get that license.
Okay, well, can we come to an agreement? Dr. Ghiad?
So the way the description is written, whether you put the term preferred in or not, it's asked for a valid CDL or obtainable in six months. To me, that's saying preferred. So, I mean, I don't think injecting the word preferred makes, it's a whole lot of difference in that. And just, again, a point of order, so we have to deal with the amendment before we deal with anything.
So we have a motion, and we have a second.
Could you re-read the actual motion that we're voting on?
If you don't want, is that okay?
The motion was to amend the Transportation Dispatcher job description to eliminate or obtainable within six months.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have to do a hand vote on this one. So the first will be yea to amend the motion, amend the motion. All those yea to amend? Absolutely. Yea, Ms. Bell, Ms. Thomas, Tyler Dufran, Mr. Dufran, and Ms. Valerie, myself. All those nay? Mr. Benor, Mr. Wong, Mr. Duplanis, Mr. Plazons, Mr. Schwest, Dr. Ghiad, Mr. Archer, Ms. Boujwa, Mr. Bootery, and Ms. Retita. Is anyone abstaining? Two, it would be? Four yays and ten nays. So motion does not carry, fails. So we vote on the original motion.
It's the package of all of these as recommended, as written.
Motion carries.
B, to adopt a village rate resolution for the rates applied to the twenty twenty one assessed roads. So move.
Motion by Mr. Duplanis, seconded by- Motion by Mr. Duplanis, seconded by Mr. Ray Plazant. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Mr. Martin?
The resolution is as follows. Resolution, being resolved that the following millages are hereby levied on the twenty-twenty-one tax roll on all properties subject to taxation by the LaPouche Parish School Board. Constitutional, three-point-six-three mills, millage key one-zero-four-seven-zero-six-two. Air conditioning maintenance, seven-point-four-nine mills, millage key one-zero-four-seven-zero-seven-zero. Retirement obligations, two mills, millage key one-zero-four-seven-zero-nine-seven. Safety, four mills, millage key one-zero-four-seven-zero-nine-nine. General maintenance, seven-point-four-nine mills, millage key one-zero-four-seven-zero-six-three. Salary supplement, seven-point-four-nine mills, millage key one-zero-four-seven-zero-six-nine. Debt service, eleven-point-two-zero mills. January eighteen, nineteen ninety-seven, proposition, point-seven mills, millage key one-zero-four-seven-zero-six-five. July nineteen, two thousand and three, proposition, two-point-nine mills, millage key one-zero-four-seven-one-zero-one. July twenty-one, two thousand and seven, proposition, two-point-seven mills, millage key one-zero-four-seven-zero-six-eight. April twenty-one, twenty-twelve, proposition, three-point-six mills, millage key one-zero-four-seven-zero-nine-six. April twenty-ninth, twenty-seventeen, proposition, one-point-three mills, millage key one-zero-four-seven-one-zero-zero. Be it further resolved that the proper administrative officials of the Parish of LaPouche, State of Louisiana, be and they are hereby empowered, authorized, and directed to spread said taxes and herein above set forth upon the assessment roll of the said parish for the year twenty-twenty-one and to make the collection of the taxes imposed for and on behalf of the taxing authority according to law, and that the taxes herein levied shall become a permanent lien and privilege of all property subject to taxation as herein set forth, and collection thereof shall be enforceable in the manner provided by law. Can you repeat that?
So, motion by Mr., excuse me, Dr. Dennis Ghiad, seconded by Mr. Tyler Dupren. Any public comment? Any board comment? For this item, we need a hand vote. So all of those voting yea to adopt the millage rates, please raise your hands. Would you like me to read every one? The motion pass, passes unanimously. Item Seven, academ, approval of academics committee recommendations as per meeting held April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Miss Valerie Boujoua.
Item A, to approve the renewal of a digital library software, three-year license agreement with entry and would take for the total cost of two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. And take appropriate action. So moved.
Motion by Miss Valerie Boujoua, seconded by Miss Mary and Retina. Do we have any public comment? Any board discussion? Mr. Delcum, would you like to speak?
Sure. This is our digital platform that we have typically primarily used for credit recovering in our high schools. Since COVID has hit, we've been using this program additionally for our virtual students. In November, we actually added to this program to capture all of our elementary grades for that same purpose. Uh, this new cost reflect, reflects a very slight increase over the previous contract, but with that, it does include all of the, the elementary grades in that platform as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delcum. Any, any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries. A, new business. A, to approve a high school mathematics curriculum with Agile, Agile Mind, seven-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, fifteen dollars and fifty cents, and Pearson Education, seventy-eight-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents, including six-year license agreements for a total cost of eight-hundred-two-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and seventy-five cents, and take appropriate action. Motion by Miss Mary Retina, seconded by Mr. Alan Archer. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Miss Retina?
I just have a, oh, okay, that, that total is for six years? That's not that much for everything?
Yes, ma'am. In, in fact, that kind of is a perfect lead into what I wanted to just explain to the board. Contracts are required to open the board, and textbooks are becoming digital software as opposed to items you purchase. And, and so what, what happens is this becomes more of a contract. Uh, Mr. Amby has approved this contract, and that's why it's being presented to you because of the timing. Uh, previously, the board has adopted budgets, and by virtue of the budget, you have a textbook allotment. And if you're buying books and it's within that allotment, it, it can seamlessly go through an operation. However, these, these textbooks are no longer textbooks. They're, they're, they're digital software platforms that are now, uh, really heavily involved in the contracting part. And therefore, it becomes prudent for the board to approve it as it is now a contract. As you can see, this is a six-year, uh, agreement, which is more about accessing this curriculum, both in a digital and a physical environment, than just buying a singular textbook, which is why it's going to the board tonight, and why I spoke to Miss Boujoua earlier about how academics committee meetings are about to get busy, because as these textbooks transition to digital platforms, they're becoming contracts, and so it would be filtered through academics and then to the board in the future. But yes, ma'am, this is for six years, to answer your, your question. Uh, and this is a tier-one curriculum, state as recommended, we adopt. And if you do not adopt a tier-one curriculum, you run the risk of foregoing any grants in your super app. This is a very good curriculum that our teachers have been a part of selecting as well.
Miss Thomas?
So each year, do, uh, do each, uh, new student get access codes? Is this how this works?
In fact, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And Retina, and the, the beauty of this is that usually textbooks every three years you have to go in, and you have to buy some books. With this, they can update automatically the, the updates part, part of the contract, right?
Yes, ma'am. It's a little bit putting the cart ahead of the horse, but we will, we will present this full program to academics because it has a lot of great teachers. Uh, it's going to interact with computers that our teachers are going to have available. The kids are going to have access to their Chromebooks, and it's going to be an interface that, that's far superior to what we've had, uh, in the last few years.
Dr. Ghiad?
So I received a correspondence from a, a math teacher. And they asked, "I sincerely hope you guys adopt the new Agile Mind mathematics curriculum. I long for the day when I can have all my class resources in one online platform." Please pass this on to the other board members on my behalf.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries. Item B, to consider renaming the fieldhouse located at South LaPouche High School in honor of Mr. Billy Revstock and take appropriate action.
Several months ago, uh, we had someone from South LaPouche community, Mr. Troy Jess Player, uh, come to Mr. Martin with his request to name the fieldhouse at South LaPouche High School after Mr. Billy Revstock. Um, that process involved a committee, which Mr. Ray Bernard served on, along with myself and other, uh, community members from South LaPouche area. It was unanimously agreed upon, and it's a great idea. Uh, Mr. Revstock is a lifelong community member at, in South LaPouche. He began working with athletics program as a high school student, and he never stopped. For the last roughly forty, almost fifty years now, uh, you will find him on the sideline of every South LaPouche football game as well as most other sporting events at South LaPouche High School. He continues that to this day. I shared this story, uh, with the committee. When, uh, Kojo came back down to South LaPouche, uh, for a sixty minutes segment that was air on CBS, the first question he asked upon arriving at South LaPouche High School was, uh, where's Billy? So that just kind of shows you the impact that he's had, uh, on that community. So it was approved through committee, that letter was sent to Mr. Martin, which now finds its way to you guys for your approval.
Motion by Dr. Dennis Ghiad, seconded by Mr. Ray Bernard. Any public comment? Any board comment? Yes, Mr. Archer?
No, Mr. Bernard has...
Mr. Bernard?
No, uh, being fortunate enough to serve on that particular committee, and it's worth saying again, and I've already said it, that's the first, fastest recommendation of, of anyone to obtain an honor such as this. Uh, it was obvious to me that the community loves this young man, and in addition to that, it's obvious that his heart and soul is for South LaPouche High School, especially the athletic part. So this is, uh, well done, well deserved, and the community will definitely, definitely be happy that this is taking place. And it will occur Saturday.
Saturday, uh, this Saturday at ten o'clock in conjunction with their football scrimmage.
Will, will it be before, at, at ten o'clock itself, or will that be after the...
The ceremony will happen at ten, and then everyone will transition towards the stadium for the, for the football game. And I do want to note, just to, just to make sure, he doesn't notice this happening.
Okay, great.
So he's going to be very, very surprised Saturday morning. He doesn't watch the news, he doesn't pay attention to Facebook, uh, so let's try to keep it secret.
Any further comments? Mr. Archer?
My good friend, uh, Mr. 308, we said it's committee meeting, I think it was last month. So, uh, it's well deserved, Mr. Revstock, from a great family, um, well deserved. Thank you.
Any further comment? Thank you, Mr. Delcum. If not, we'll vote. Motion carries. Item Nine, memorial resolutions. A, Miss Marilla Jean, retired school janitor, Dr. Ghiad.
Miss Marilla Jean was hired by the LaPouche Parish School District on January fifth, nineteen seventy-nine as a school janitor at Chagvee Elementary School. She was promoted to head janitor at Chagvee Elementary School on November sixth, nineteen eighty-nine. Miss Lejean retired on September twenty-second, two thousand and one, having served the LaPouche Parish School District for a total of twenty-two and a half years.
B, Mr. Gleason Sanchez, retired at Printers Maintenance Department, Ms. Retina.
Mr. Gleason Sanchez was hired by the LaPouche Parish School District on January twentieth, nineteen seventy-five as a janitor at Tibido High School. Mr. Sanchez was promoted to head janitor at Chagvee Elementary School on April fifteenth, nineteen eighty-two. Then on September sixth, nineteen ninety, he was promoted to an apprentice in the maintenance department. Mr. Sanchez retired on January twentieth, nineteen ninety-five, having served the LaPouche Parish School District for a total of twenty years.
C, Mr. Welton Curall, retired teacher, Mr. Archer?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Welton Curall was hired by the LaPouche Parish School District on January first, nineteen seventy-two as a teacher at Galliana High School. Mr. Curall also taught at South LaPouche High School and was an attenuate teacher in the processing during his career with the district. Mr. Curall retired in January seventeenth, two thousand and five, having served the LaPouche Parish School District for a total of thirty-three years. And Mr. Curall was a very wide-channel person in the way he teaches. His wife, Miss Linda, also taught at South LaPouche High School, and she retired as well. He has his son, Ron Curall, Coach Curall, who, uh, first he teaching at Philmet High, Junior High School, Middle School, so called Junior High. And Miss Susan Curall, his daughter-in-law, who also worked at South LaPouche High School, and pretty cool friend, yes. So he's a wonderful person. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Bernard?
Among his, uh, family and friends, he was known as Snoot, that, that was his nickname, but, uh, four, that didn't describe his name. He, uh, he was very, very instrumental in, uh, setting up a business computer-type program at South LaPouche High School. I had the good fortune of working with him a little while at, uh, Galliana Junior High School. He coached football, baseball, track, you name it. And, uh, he was, he was definitely a, a man who didn't sit still. He had many interests, and, uh, he spread that knowledge to, uh, all the kids that, that who's, that were fortunate enough to have him as an instructor. And I know his wife, Glenda, Glenda's a teacher as well, and, um, best of luck to their families, and, and I know they'll miss, uh, they'll miss, uh, Art Snoot as well.
Thank you very much. Item B, Mr. Dale Malonsong, retired teacher, Ms. Retina.
Mr. Dale Malonsong was hired by the LaPouche Parish School District on January twenty-fifth, nineteen seventy-one as a teacher at East Tibido Junior High School. Mr. Malonsong retired on January nineteenth, two thousand and seven, having served the LaPouche Parish School District for a total of thirty-six years.
Let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded on a, recorded on a special page of our unit. Item Ten, tentative dates for future meetings. A, regular board meetings, Wednesday, June second, twenty-twenty-one. Due to high school graduations, we will have no scheduled committee meetings this month. Um, before we adjourn, we'd like to go ahead and recognize and say thank you to all of our LaPouche Parish School District educators as this week we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you all for all that you do.
Thank you, Madam President. In addition, I'd like to reach out your mother's name to all the mothers here and in our marriage and all the work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.